Remember what it was like to be a kid? To explore and play? To roam free all day? In Jamestown, North Carolina, we get out of the grind and escape into the moment. People feel good here. Eat well here. Feel swell here. We go for a ride or an afternoon stroll. We cheer each other on. Here, a treasured history. Meets the energy of a town on the rise. In a place with true heart and soul. And where we have our own special beat. Jamestown, North Carolina, where history and possibility meet.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. For the clerk, please take the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Glanville?
Here.
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 Councilmember Burgess?
Here.
Councilmember Wolf?
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Councilmember Glanville, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Counsel, are there any changes to the agenda? None of the changes to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. Do you have anyone sign up for public comment, Katie?
Yes, Robert Frederick.
Robert Frederick, 500 Windwood Drive. It's been now two years since I made my request for public comments, or public documents related to the D.R. Horton deal, which was passed two years ago at this council meeting in January of 2023. You may recall back to that time, especially Councilmember Glanville, when she was on the planning board, made a wonderful statement asking the town's hired land use attorney, who had made the changes to, or the proposed changes to the land development ordinance. And her instincts were right on target, that it was the land development attorney, Tom Terrell, who made those changes. And as we were to learn through other public documents, those changes were then represented by D.R. Horton as their own. The reason that I made the public request for the emails that I asked for was because we saw something very interesting two years ago, which was that the public had a different version of the land, the development agreement than the council members did. And it turned out that the council members themselves had different versions from the mayor, at least one council member did. So I made a little inquiry into what was going on, because there were things about that whole process that didn't make sense. In particular, we had a version dated the middle of December, a draft development agreement, that says it was prepared by and returned to Thomas Terrell on the front cover. But the document itself and its metadata showed that it had been authored by Mark Isaacson, D.R. Horton's attorney. Tom Terrell then charged Jamestown hours of time to review a document that he apparently had drafted, but hadn't D.R. Horton's attorney had. Later on, I went and looked at what was written on the front of that document, namely that per 160D 1003, this agreement is subject to change after public posting and may be changed up until the time of the decision by the governing body. If you look at 160D 1003, and I've printed it out here as a copy to give you, it says nothing about that. It refers to 1005, that there must be a hearing. 1005 says public notice must be conveyed through 1602, notice of public hearing. There's nothing at all about this.
Thank you.
So I'd like, please, to have my records, documents, as requested, for free, without a $3,000 charge, so that I can really understand what happened. And if something wrong did happen, then it's up to you all, please, to make that amends and make that change. Thank you.
Nobody else signed up?
Okay. Chris Pierce, would you join me at the podium, counsel?
Almost, because we're all in love with this. In recognition of driving the best town vehicle in the Jamestown Christmas parade, we wanted to have your certificate. For recognition.
Well, good evening, mayor and council. A couple of updates on some of the major projects that are in progress right now. All contracts have been let for the playground equipment, our natural play equipment, and the shelters. Our park closed on January 6th and will remain closed until the end of construction. This is going to just help ensure the safety of the public while allowing us some time to complete those construction items. I did want to say thank you to Scott Coakley and his staff, Jeff, Dennis, and Josh, for hosting the last play day in the park on January 3rd. It was really windy and cold.
It was fun.
But they did have some folks come out and enjoy the park one last time, the old park. ARPA sidewalk projects, the smaller sidewalk projects, the work is currently underway. We are still waiting delivery of some materials. I know that Jason has been working diligently to make sure that we can get those materials in. We've been told as latest today that it should be in here by the end of February, so we are still waiting on brick to come in from Pine Hall. The larger sidewalk project, which is concrete, is currently still under design. We anticipate the award of construction at the February council meeting. The design team is working to address a couple of comments from the NCDQ. We are currently in progress with updating our golf course website, and once that website's completed, staff began work, once the main town site was completed, we began work on the golf course website. And we've made some significant progress there. We are also anticipating by the end of February, beginning of March, that will roll out and be live. In order to meet the council strategic plan goal number 4C, Deborah, our lead for North Carolina Fellow, has been working on our town's first citizens academy, which will be held this spring. Deborah has a list of interested parties. She's been in contact with them, and she's going to be working with a couple of our council members to help appoint the first cohort. And we'll bring that full list to you at the February meeting, with our group beginning their work in early March. Annual loose leaf pickup, which began October 22nd, ends on February 21st. We would ask that everybody have their leaves at the curb no later than February the 19th. That's just to allow our staff enough time to get around to everybody to ensure pickup. So far, the town has collected over 460 tons of leaves and completed over 18 complete rounds around town. This seems fitting, because it's snowing, but I wanted to take a moment to thank the public services and our park staff, who were all on call during the last weather event. It's been several years since we had some wintry weather to respond to, and this didn't yield a lot of snow, but our folks were here on call waiting for that, in the case that they had to respond to that. We did publish this information, but it bears repeating that we have to have a minimum of two to three inches of snow for this plow to really be effective. We don't have salting equipment. We get very few winter weather events, so storage of materials like salt is, takes up an incredible amount of space, it's expensive, and constant maintenance makes it prohibitive for the low number of occasions that we would use a salting equipment. However, DOT has been brining the roads. They brought in the roads today, so all of those roads that are operated by NC DOT have been treated. Public services did not, I think they tested a few times to see if the plows would be effective, and they weren't really effective. There was a lot of sleet in this particular event, so if they had tried to use the plows a lot, it would have packed that down. And I don't know if you realize, but, man, it just hasn't gone away. It's still sitting around. So we are thankful for those crews who stayed here late into the evening on the night of the event, and who are committed to keeping our citizens safe. I did want to say congratulations to our planning director, Jose Cologne, for being awarded the Tree City USA designation for what I believe is our 17th straight year. And I wanted to say we did appreciate his work on that. And also, congratulations to Josh Brown and our Parks and Recreation Department for earning his CDL. Now, that may not sound like a big feat, but the legislature has changed the way that you're, you have to go, what the steps you have to go through to get your CDL, and it includes an extensive amount of video training that you have to go through, and an extensive amount of classroom training and on-the-road training. So he had to attend a school and take a lot of tests to do that, and we are appreciative of his efforts there. That's all I have for you, unless you have questions.
Questions?
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. I had a quick thank you if I can. To Matt and Scott and Faith, at least, I don't know if anybody else is involved, but I got an unusual contact on Thursday. Unfortunately, a longtime resident was in his final days and wanted a memorial bench. And they worked super quick. Somehow, you know, by Friday, I think by Friday afternoon, at least, things were in line to get ordered, and I know the family was extremely appreciative of that. And I just really felt like that was kind of the best of Jamestown working together for that, so I appreciate that.
So that particular bench, the proof is being prepared, and as soon as the proof is ready and the family signs off on that, we'll put that order together with another bench that we have coming for another longtime resident, and those will be placed at the golf course. Scott has done a lot of work out there, near the putting green, to create a small retaining wall and some steps, using just staff talent to do that. So I think it'll look very nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Martha, I'm so glad to have you back.
Well, thank you.
Any reports for us?
Glad to be back. Yeah, actually, too. We did have a part organizational meeting on January the 8th, which was the selection of officers, and I was selected secretary. I'm still not sure how that happened, but anyway, it did. And then the TAC meeting is next week.
Thank you.
Very, very short planning, planning board meeting on January the 13th, and Denise Johnson was elected as chair for 2025 and hoping for vice chair. And of course, Jose did talk about the citizens academy, so we hope that, again, as we continue to talk about that, that we can get a lot of engagement for that.
Thank you. And welcome Rob Garland as the newest member of our planning board. Rebecca?
Parks and Recreation.
No, nothing for me.
Okay, thank you. Well, Matthew, we're back to you and your introductions.
It's my pleasure to introduce Captain Howell. He will be presenting the annual law enforcement update.
Okay.
Ah, apologies, she did step out, so Sergeant Dale. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. So we received the CAD calls for service for the town, and I just wanted to give you guys just a visual of, you know, what we cover and the area that we cover for Jamestown. So we've just got the map, last year's, year before statistics, and then our response times for you. So this is all of District 3. So the blue, the lighter blue, and then the green and yellow over there, those are all the areas that we cover out of the city. So High Point over on the left, and then Greensboro to our north. You go to the next one. So this is Jamestown. So everything in the brown areas is the areas of Jamestown that we cover and we respond to, along with everything in the, in the white. I just wanted you guys to have a visual of what we are working with here.
Okay.
So in 2023, these are the total calls for service per month. For a total for the 2023 year was 918 calls for service in Jamestown. And you go to the next one. And then, so for 2024, we had 10 less. So 10 less calls for service than we had the previous year. And for January through June, the calls went down. So we had fewer calls this year in those months than we did in 2023. July, September, October, and November, we had a slight increase in the calls for service. August stayed the exact same, and December we went down. So a couple of those months were actually a significant decrease, for a total of 908. So, you know, maybe, maybe Jamestown and we're doing something right, and we got fewer calls. Okay? And this is our response time to the different towns in, in our district, and also actually in the entire county. So Summerfield, Stokesdale, Oak Ridge, in District 1, Witsit, Sedalia, Pleasant, or in District 2, Jamestown Pleasant Garden in District 3. If you'll notice, Jamestown's district and their column, for the last, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six years, we're green. Means you've got, you guys have the best response time. So, you know, we make sure we get, we get out there quickly and as safely as we possibly can. Okay. This is broken down by zone, so this is Jamestown's, we consider 32 zone. And then, so the, all the 30s is in District 3, 2, District 2, the 10s is District 1. So again, if you'll notice, our response times for our zones are still lower than most of the other districts or zones, and even, even with, you know, responding, being able to respond to Jamestown, we're also able to respond to the other zones and areas of our district as well. Okay? And then total for district, District 3, which is where we are currently, we also, all green, one little yellow right there, but we are still with the best response times for the entire district. And, you know, we're, I think, what are we, second in size for districts? I believe. So we're second in size in the, in districts. So, you know, we're putting forth, you know, a great effort to actually get to those response, to those calls quickly and safely, and to be able to be effective with that. I think that was the last one. And just so that you'll know, just for your information, the most calls that we've received were, we had burglar alarms, residential's and businesses. We've also had quite a few check welfares. There have been law assistance needed, where we help out fire or EMS, disorderly subject or crowds. We only had about 35 of those for the year. Suspicious activity, suspicious subject, and suspicious vehicle. Those were the, the other high numbers, nothing over 60, though. And then we had 44 trespasser calls. And every, just about everything else was around 20 or fewer calls for service for, for the town.
Could we get a copy of that? Yeah, to send to us of your report? Well, all of it, but the presentation, yeah, just a copy of that.
I was gonna say, you've got the presentation, but with the numbers, too.
You're welcome to have this, if you'd like. I mean, do they just make copy, or can they just have this?
If you'll just give it to Katie, she can just.
Yeah, could get a copy of this. I did have a question. I don't know if you can answer this or not, but maybe there's some statistics, you know, you could find out. I was just wondering, of course, we've got the response time, which is awesome, I'm glad that we'll have those figures, but are there any statistics, I can't even say that word, that would tell if there are certain times of the day that crime happens in Jamestown? What I'm getting at, my mom and dad tell me nothing good happens after 11 o'clock at night, and on the weekend especially. So I just wondered if there are any, a pattern that shows maybe Wednesday through Sunday more crime happens, and Monday through Tuesday it's down? Like I say, that's something if you could look up, could get back to us.
I can certainly try to look. Just from my experience, it's, I mean, it's kind of hit or miss. Sometimes we'll have a ridiculously crazy Monday or a Monday night, you know, that's something out of the ordinary. A Friday or Saturday will be super quiet, whereas, you know, you would think would be converse to that.
Exactly. And to add to that, you have different types of crimes in the day versus at night. So it's not gonna, I don't know exactly what you would be looking for, but let's just say be any motor vehicle, maybe in the neighborhood, that's gonna happen in the middle of the night.
Right.
Versus larceny, shoplifting, that's what happens.
Right.
So, you know, it just, it just depends on what the crime is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That varies.
Okay.
So you wouldn't have really a good.
It'd be hard to. Yeah, it'd be, it'd be kind of hard to, to plot those. Okay. And I mean, it's just, and like I said, I mean, you know, someone who's gonna commit a crime is just gonna pick the day they want to do that. Yeah. True, yeah. Okay.
We appreciate it, y'all.
I have a question. Yeah, I'm sorry, I have a question. Is there a way, I know in previous years, not when I was on the council, but when I was, you know, watching the presentation, it's talked about where are the crimes committed? It seemed like a lot happened, like at the Sheets and at the Dollar General and stuff. Can we get those kinds of, to know if it's like mostly residential, or is it mostly at the big businesses? Is it, are businesses downtown?
So if one, whoever contacts me, and I know I speak with Katie a lot, but whoever wants to contact me and tell me exactly what you're looking for, then we'll work on it.
Okay.
Whatever you, whatever you guys, you know, want, and just get with me and we'll, we'll do that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Thank you very much. Any other questions for, counsel? Thanks, ladies.
Thank you for all your work.
Yes, ma'am.
All be safe out there.
Chief Carson, we're ready for your report now.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I would like to echo what Matthew said, too, on town staff and crews, when the winter storm came through last, so those crews were standing by and around town, and they actually were able to help us out, too, because when the roads were, the roads were very slick. And so on one of the calls that we went on, on a, on a long driveway, the road was slick, we got stuck and couldn't get out, called the town's crews, they come over with the, with the loader and helped pull us out. So that was a huge help for us. It got us, got us back in service and was able to get back on the road. So having them around like that was very beneficial for other, other things as needed. So that definitely helped us out that night. But, so our 2024 annual report, I'll go through, we are an ISO Class II, so we're very proud of that, and have been Class II in the town for quite a few years now. Matthew, are you running those? Okay. So still, just my staffing is one captain and two firefighters, three personnel daily at the station 24 hours, 365. We also utilize the station for the cadets that go to, to the academy at GTCC next door. And so we utilize them to help supplement staff, and they come in and learn not only the, the academic side at the college, but get to see the real life, real world side at the fire station as well. And we, we use that kind of like a farm league and be able to, to bring those in as full-time firefighters as well. So fortunate right here next door with that facility, to be able to utilize it for that. All right, Matthew. Our, our training for the year, or our fire and life safety for the year, so we reached a total of 8,852 adults and children in the town, 21 smoke alarms and batteries installed. We delivered 28 programs with 46 staff hours. One of the big ways that we do this in the town, obviously, is our involvement with the music in the park. So that's been a great thing for us, to be able to outreach to the community, and we've kind of grown that over time, as we've been able to do that and get really a lot of face-to-face interaction with the, with the public, and always have a good, good feedback from that. So we enjoy that, that piece of interaction that's unique to the town, that we don't have to get to do throughout the rest of the district like that. The next slide is our total training hours. So we offered 480 classes, 484 classes throughout the, throughout our department. It's really hard to dial that into just the town, but for a total staff hours of right over 13,000 hours. Okay, so response by station, so we ended the year with 3,867 total calls for service. You can see the breakdown there by station. These are the calls that actually happened in that district, or were dispatched in those districts. And so Station 46 encompasses some outside of the, the town itself as well, but that's total 758 calls for service with Station 46. One statistic that we're working on with our new records management system is to be able to dial that to the specifics of the town. And so hopefully in 2025, the data that we're able to get back will be also town-specific to what happens within the boundaries of the town. So we're, we're working on that as we've upgraded our records management system for the department. Okay. So total breakdown by calls, district-wide, so our medical, our medical calls are right over 50%, or a little under 50% of our calls, that, that's always the trend with that. Fire incidents, 225, fire alarms, 367, motor vehicle accidents, 380, and then kind of the others that we group together, right over 1,000. So service calls, good intent calls, tree downs, or if they, somebody, if we're dispatched to a call and it ends up not being a call, that's good intent. that's good intent, or if we don't find anything. False alarms, as far as fire alarms, or not fire alarms, but medical calls are different things that fall into things that were dispatched that ended up not being what they were. So quite a few of those. Next slide is Station 46, Jamestown's responses specifically. So a little under 50% on the medical calls, fire incidents, 24. And just, we'll look at that a little bit in the next slide, too. Fire alarms, 92. Motor vehicle accidents, 46. Service calls, good intent calls, fire alarms, 156. So we did see a little bit of our, we did see motor vehicle accidents increase a little bit with the Jamestown bypass, which we knew would happen some of those intersections, nothing crazy. But we did experience a few more motor vehicle accidents in those areas. So 24 fire incidents on the next slide. This is district-wide. You can see the property value exposed to fire, property value lost to fire, and then property value saved at the bottom. So we had close to 3 million district, or district-wide. On the next slide, in James, or Station 46's Jamestown, 1.3 million was exposed to fire. Of those 24 or so fire incidents, 39,000 lost, so a little over 97% saved. So we're proud of that. That's obviously one of our big things that we track and make sure that we're trending that and seeing where that's continuing to stay high. Travel time and turnout time, this is one thing that's big on that last slide and just that we look at, too, with our response times. And so our benchmark is two minutes turnout. So that's from the time of dispatch, from the time they receive the call at 911, they try to turn that out within a minute. Most times it's a lot less than that. There's emergency, there's dispatches that are automated. So as soon as they give them, answer the phone and start answering specific questions, the computer can dispatch it quicker than they think they can. So that, we're working off computer dispatch to where in the stations it's, the technology is usually in 30 seconds. We can get out from the time they call, or we get notified from the time they call. And then from the time of notification to out the station is less than two minutes. And that's 90 percentile, so 90% of the time, that number's 156. On average, that's a lot less, but we look at 90% because we want that to be a higher standard than just 50%. So that's in the accreditation and other things that we look at, we look at the 90 percentile. The other thing with that is that's both daytime and nighttime. So during the day, our benchmark is one minute, which we hit that benchmark during the day. At night, our benchmark's two minutes. So between the two, it's 156. But the difference in that is you're awake during the day, you're mobile. At night, they're asleep, so that's the difference in the turnout. The travel time is right under four minutes. So from the time that they roll out the station to the time of arrival is a little over four minutes. And that's 46's, that's Jamestown's district, both in the town and outside. So that's very good response time by our standards and what we try to achieve. The last is, what we're getting ready, every year we do our awards banquet to look at what we, the awards that our firefighters have achieved over the last year. One of those is our medical life saves. So when you look at the medical calls, close to being 50% of our calls, we, in the town of Jamestown, we had two medical life saves this last year where it fit this criteria. So what we look at with that is presenting to department members that are responsible for the use of any authorized medical act that results in the saving of a life, qualifying this award. The patient must have been pulseless with no respirations upon the fire department's arrival and released to the hospital emergency department with a pulse and breathing. So two of those were in the town. To where they arrived, the patient was pulseless and breathless. They performed CPR and advanced life-saving measures with EMS and was able to get pulses back and transport those patients to the hospital. So those are the stats that we like to make sure that, you know, those are the feel-good stats that are making a difference out in the public day-to-day. So with that, that's our report for 2024. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, I was just curious, the slide that has the property value exposed to fire and lost and then saved, like what properties are these?
So those are obviously, with a million-dollar value, that is gonna be residential. Some years past, we've seen $24 million total value. Those are obviously incorporating commercial properties into the mix. And we've seen, like when we've had small fires in some of the commercial district, then that, obviously, what we, when we look at our property value, it's total value of the building and then the value of whatever.
I guess I was getting, was there actual fires that?
Yeah, so in order to be involved on this slide, yeah, there was an actual fire of some sort that resulted in it, at a minimum of char and or some type of smoke and fire. Yep, so the fire alarms and false calls, they don't generate into the save-loss report. So it would have been an actual fire.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, do you have the Parks and the Parks Department report for us?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a quick quarterly report. Just wanted to compare the performance of Jamestown Park Golf Course during the last quarter of 2023 with the last quarter of 2024. In the fourth quarter of 2023, the course recorded a total of 5,568 rounds. And these figures went up with the final quarter of 2024, where the rounds were a total of 6,519. So we went up about 1,000 rounds this year in the last quarter. And then our food and beverage sales also saw some fluctuations with the 2023 performing for a total for the quarter at $15,466. Compared to 2024, we had a total of $19,352. So about a $4,000 increase there. And last year, we did have a few key operational factors included. One of which, the big one, was the closure of nine holes for the big dam repair that we did on the then-front side, now-backside. As you know, we've had a lot of cold weather, and the month of January has been pretty grim at the golf course. We covered the greens on January 3rd, and we looked to uncover them hopefully this Saturday. We're gonna keep our fingers crossed, but this will be the longest they've been covered since we've had this type of grass, and it'll be three weeks Friday. So we're anxious to get them off, just because we never had them covered this long. But hopefully, next week will be a better week weather-wise, and we'll start bringing in some revenue. We're currently looking to add a few technology aspects to the pro shop and just exploring it right now, maybe adding some wireless features and some televisions where people can watch slideshows if they're renting the building or having the JGA or any golf association can post live scores. And that way, it'll be broadcast on TVs in there. The stormwater repair at the golf course that we're getting ready to start, it's on hole number nine. It's in process. We've approved all the materials, and they have been ordered. We plan on starting to drain the lake this week in preparation to start in February. That way, it gives, ensures the area has time to dry up. While we're, while those holes are closed, we plan to make a few repairs to stairs on number nine and replace some rotten wood and put some stone steps in there. We're gonna do that in-house, just take advantage of the time when it's closed right there. We've also made some improvements to some bad areas on the course that have been damaged due to heavy traffic. We've installed two retaining walls to enhance the look and give a little bit more playable tee surface to a tee box. We have two dedication benches that will, that have been ordered, and they'll be placed at the putting facility. We're looking forward to those, too. That's gonna be, it's gonna dress it up real nice. And then in the Parks Department, we have, in addition to the golf course operations, significant updates in the park include near completion of the new basketball court. The weather is not cooperating, and to paint the lines, it's gotta be a certain temperature, and we just have not had that. But the arrival of the new playground equipment has started. We have the new shades in for the swings and stuff, so we are starting to get a few truckloads here and there. The readiness of the natural play equipment for installation. I was talking to that gentleman on the phone today, and we're supposed to meet, we were supposed to meet tomorrow, but he canceled because of the weather. And we're gonna try to meet Thursday to get that installed, hopefully first of February. These improvements aim to enhance the recreational opportunities for visitors and contribute to the ongoing development of the park's facilities. We did have a request, as you know, for Ren Miller to do a play in June from the Piedmont Shakespeare Company. That request was to have a live performance of Shakespeare's Hamlet. They came with, I had questions and concerns about, they didn't want to use microphones. And so I was wondering if it was gonna be too loud. And after we investigated a little bit more, they don't think it's gonna, we're gonna be able to do that. So they are gonna look into renting some microphones, but at this point in time, I don't, I'm not sure that's gonna happen. Or to getting Ray Ramp up, we're getting field requests, and it's looking like it's gonna be very busy. We're trending to have a great spring, probably one of the best that we've ever had for, actually, this whole year is probably gonna be the best one we've ever had with the addition of NC Fusion joining the YMCA and the Eagles RFC. And as Matt said, we're, we have the park currently closed for the ongoing projects. And we did upgrade the lights in the parking lot of the golf course to add LED lights. It's not quite where we wanted it to be. We still have a few blind spots, so I'm working with Duke Energy. I actually met with them today as well. And we're looking to get a few more lights put in there and get that wrapped up. Hopefully, these won't take as long to come in as the last ones. Hopefully, this report provides you a comparative overview of the performances of the golf course, highlighting the rounds, and alongside the operational challenges that we had and the exciting park updates that's going on now as well. That's all I have right here, and just curious if y'all have any questions?
My only question was about, actually, so when we were out at the Rotary Award Ceremony for the parade, I noticed, when I was going to my car in the parking lot at the golf course, it's dark in some areas. So I was just curious, so Duke Energy, like, do we get the lights from them? Or they just do them, or how's that work? I know some of the lights are like hu- huge.
Yes.
They're not like our little ones that we have up here, you know what I mean?
No, we have some nice decorative ones, like at the pro shop, but those don't put out a whole lot of light.
Right, yeah.
The ones in the parking lot are a lot larger. And we've had these old metal halod lights, and it was, they're just outdated. They've been up as long as, probably since the course opened. But we wanted to add the black decorative poles.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Make it look a little nicer.
Yeah, absolutely.
And put some brighter LEDs out there. And just working with Duke Energy, it's a, for lack of a better term, like a lease. Where they come and put it out, we just pay the power bill.
I see, okay.
There's not much upfront money.
Okay, all right, very good. I was just curious. Of course, it was icy that day, too, so it was like, I'm gonna wipe out here.
It's dark.
And then I'll be really embarrassed, because I'm always the one who's like, snow's no problem.
Any other questions for Scott?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew, you have an event to ask us about?
Yes, we have had a request for a special event, which is actually a wedding, to take place on October 18th. That sounds like a great day for a wedding. On the grounds of the library, the applicant supplied all the necessary items, including a copy of the insurance. Their application and description of the event will not impact library operations or town operations, so we don't see any reason to the diet, so recommend approval.
I guess the library staff is okay with that.
Yes, I did speak with Jim about it, and he did not have any concerns.
Okay.
They will not be inside the building, just on the grounds.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
It's a great idea, I know.
It's a great location for a wedding.
Fantastic, yeah. I actually thought Rebecca and Cory were renewing their vows. This sounds like a very Rebecca thing.
We'll make sure that the public services staff services the fountain there before.
Excellent. That's the first time, huh, for something like that, as far as a wedding?
I couldn't answer that.
As far as I know, yeah. There's been a wedding over here at Ren Miller before.
We've had them at Town Hall before, but this is the first that I know where.
I would make a motion to approve the special request.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Do we have anyone signed up for the second public comment?
Nobody signed up.
Any other business?
I guess the citizen survey has been closed. Is that January?
Okay. Katie, do you have any other business to share with us?
Not yet.
Okay.
Said not yet.
Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.